Good morning, everyone. We will call to order the February 20th, 2025, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, seeing all three commissioners present. I will ask our Director of Commerce, Steve Forster, to lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Fledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, so I'd like to start by acknowledging the devastating fire that has occurred in Abington Township at SBS Technologies. I'm sure many of you have seen the steady stream of updates on this fire. It began Monday night at 9:30 p.m. And thankfully, all of the employees were accounted for and, you know, losses of life or anything like that. However, this is, you know, a significant employer in the area. Hundreds of people live in the vicinity as well. And it was, you know, a scary situation for everyone affected. And people still have concerns about the effects. And it will have, you know, an impact for years to come. The building is now going to have to be demolished. A total of 68 fire companies from all across Montgomery County, as well as Bucks County and Delaware County responded to fight the fire, which is, as you know, you know, all volunteer when it comes to our region. When you're talking about the firefighters, these are people that, you know, you may work with in your own workplace, people who have stepped up in their communities to serve at moments like this. And I just want to thank all of those who responded. And our county team has been essential at coordinating those efforts. Our Public Safety Department, our Kit Command Center Incident Response Team, our Hazmat Unit, we play a critical role at, in emergency responses. And I want to thank Brian and the team, everyone in public safety for working to continue to do. Our emergency operations communications staff supported this through text messages and communicating with those in the area who were affected, communicating the evacuation or stay in place orders. And of course, we're doing this to support the work of Abington Township, as well as Cheltenham and Jenkins Town Townships, who are taking the lead, their police departments, their fire personnel, as well as at the Pennsylvania state level, the Department of Health, Department of Environmental Protection, federal level, level of the EPA, all of which have played a role in monitoring the air quality, ensuring that people are safe and are able to stay in the vicinity and, you know, can be, can be confident of that. There will be updates regularly, including again today at noon. But what I would just like to say from a county perspective is that we're giving them all the resources they need. Our public safety will be there until the situation, you know, comes to a conclusion, the fire is contained. But many people might ask, why can't you just, you know, why is it, why does it continue? The building is massive. For those of you who are not aware, it's over 500,000 square feet. And so you can't send firefighters into the building. There's a risk of collapse, or it has to be contained from the outside. That's one of the reasons that this goes on as long as it does. But we're going to be there, we're going to support the local municipalities, you know, work and fire factors until the situation is fully resolved. So at 11:00 a.m. yesterday, the evacuation of children in place orders were lifted. So people who live in that vicinity are able to go home. And I also want to thank Cheltenham High School, who worked with Red Cross to house families that needed a place to go. Many families just went to friends or other folks that lived nearby. But the high school was ready. I met with a number of families there, including some of the folks who called 911 at 9:30 p.m. when the fire explosion first broke out. And they're very thankful to everyone who's been supportive in helping them deal with, you know, what was a very unexpected night. And several of them have not slept since then. So I just want to thank everyone who's been part of supporting the families. I want to reiterate some information that has been shared by Abington Township, which is that, one, no toxic chemicals of concern have been detected in the air at this time. Two, that environmental health experts have said there are no concerns about the drinking water in the area. And that monitoring efforts in Abington, Jenkins Town, and Cheltenham will continue in the weeks and months to come. So, you know, there will be, you know, continuous monitoring, as we said. So if something changes, you'll hear about it. If anyone encounters debris from the fire on their property, they should call 911 so that officials can safely collect it out of the abundance of caution. And finally, I'll just recognize the owners, the employees of SBS Technologies are now facing an uncertain future. There are employees who were in the warehouse and employees who got out that night. We're thankful for all the emergency responders who made sure that happened. But, you know, the county is going to do everything we can from a commerce perspective and economic perspective to make sure that we support employees, for example, unemployment compensation and otherwise. So I look forward to hearing from the company. I haven't heard anything yet myself, but I want to make sure that we touch base with the employees and ensure that they have everything they need and, you know, are not, you know, are secure, though they have, the future of the site remains unclear. We have to do everything we can to support their employment, continued employment in Cheltenham. So it's a long road ahead, but thank you to all the community partners, especially those in the locality for everything they've done. On a much lighter note, Eagles are the Super Bowl champions, so let's just acknowledge that. So, yes. So we're fortunate, we had a parade on Friday. And what was the final tune? Does anyone know how many people went to the parade? Nine plus, or?
A lot, sure.
Sure. Let's say it was a movie. Felt like that. But this is, you know, a great moment for the whole region. And I think, I feel bad for the broadcasters who had to leave out every other word at the speeches at the end of the, at the end of the parade. And it was, it was a great celebration. And hopefully, we'll have many more in years to come as the young teens all. I'll also acknowledge that yesterday, or actually, it's Tuesday morning, we hosted our State of the County event. First time we had a State of the County event since this board came together. I think it was really a great moment to hear from all three commissioners about some of the great successes we've had in our first year, as well as the plans for this year and some further out. So I want to thank our communications team and Megan, all in particular, Megan was looking down. Please give her a round of applause for that. And, you know, and Gabby and everybody on the whole team. I'm sure, yeah, there's many more that I can name. But, look, it's so important for us to share our vision, our plans publicly because it takes public accountability to get them front. And we want to be a board that is responsive to our residents. And in order to do that, we've got to put things forward to hear who wants to collaborate, how we can collaborate, and also highlight the work that's happening within the county. So this is the first time we did this as a board, looking forward to a year from now, thinking, how do we do more to work across all the county departments, the roll offices to pull out some of their priorities and highlight those? So that's something that I think if we had more time this year, I would have done. But in general, I think it was a great event. The first thing that we will launch today that was mentioned was the transition of our recovery office. So for those of you who are not the State of the County, I'll just emphasize this one piece, which is that our recovery office for the last several years was in charge of administering about $161 million in parking money and funding from the American Rescue Plan. And they have been a phenomenal team led by Eli Glenn. Give him a round of applause for that. Critical funding out to so many organizations, so many projects that were needed during the time of the COVID, you know, epidemic at the peak, when so many were affected during the lockdowns and such, but also subsequently. But he's going to take all of the experience from the team, their knowledge, their understanding of how the county works, what's critical around, around the county as well in terms of the organizations that we've worked with. And Stephen Tipton, our Deputy COO, is helping lead this transition, overseeing this, and turning our recovery office into an office of innovation, strategy, and performance. So they're going to use all of their expertise to now look inward at how we operate as a county, how we can more efficiently deliver services, how we can make every dollar move further, and what are the things that we can do to be innovative, to be more effective, efficient, responsive. So that's something that we're excited about. So with that, I will turn it over to my colleague, Commissioner Winder.
Great, thank you. How about those Eagles? I still have Eagles nail polish on. I'll take it off, take it off soon, not my usual nail color. So thanks for being here today. I just want to reiterate Commissioner Mckeesha's gratitude towards Montgomery County's first responders, volunteers, and emergency management personnel who stepped up this week in response to the devastating fire in Abington. This has been a difficult week and a difficult job, well done nonetheless. So I just want to extend my thoughts to the friends and neighbors who have been impacted, especially those who find themselves without a place of employment, thinking of them as well. And I'm heartened by the displays of community support, right? When you face a tragedy like this, it really shows how great the Montgomery County community truly is. Donations of food and resources to our emergency responders, offers of support to impacted neighbors, and our federal, state, and local leaders all coming together to help the community. So I'm going to quote Mr. Rogers, who is from Pennsylvania, if you didn't know that. Look for helpers, you will always find people who are helping. So thanks to everyone that's helping to keep our community safe. Next month, oh, well, next week, we will be hosting our last Black History Month event. I want to give a shout out to the Black History Month Committee, who's done a phenomenal job in terms of facilitating thoughtful discussion around African Americans and labor. That was the theme this year. I had the chance to join a discussion yesterday regarding Black women and leadership. And I'll tell you, they only invited me to say a few words at the top of the program, but I secretly wanted to be on the panel. And there were so many times throughout the discussion that I was like, that's my experience, that resonates with me. And so I'm really grateful to the panelists. And so I'm really grateful to the panelists that were, you were actually there leading our recovery efforts. I learned so much, so much about your background and your experience that I didn't know. And I feel so lucky that you've chosen to work in Montgomery County. So, and we also had Dr. Janine Darby and Tina Lawson, our Register of Wills. But, you know, it was just a great, a great discussion. So if you want, if you haven't had a chance to come to any of the programming thus far, there will be a final event next week on February twenty sixth at eleven thirty at the DeKalb Center. And so it will be an in-person celebration focusing on African American culture with arts, and there will be some amazing food there. So I hope you can join us and stop by. Yesterday, our patronitarian Noah Marlier at Montgomery County Bar Association hosted a free name change clinic. Noah's office usually hosts these events twice a year in Montgomery County and helps adults who need assistance while going through the process of changing their name. The program is especially supportive of those in the LGBTQ plus community and who are changing their name to better reflect their identity. And so yesterday's clinic reached capacity very shortly after it was announced, which demonstrates the value of providing resources and free legal help to navigate the complex name change process. And as I mentioned, we're all about helping our friends and neighbors in Montgomery County. And I want to give a shout out to the bar association and our patronitarian Noah Marlier. He also, if you didn't have a chance to read his op ed in the Philadelphia Inquirer, that was another great, great read and shows the work that he's doing to support our friends and neighbors. And that's it for me.
Well, good morning, everyone. As mentioned, we experienced a huge event, devastating event in Abington earlier this week. It was, that's continuing on. Commissioner McKeja mentioned all of the fire companies and all the different teams that were there, county teams from not only Montgomery County, but our surrounding counties as well. And the effort that was put in there, and it was, like I said, it was over sixty-five plus apparatuses that showed up on scene from all around to fight this fire. And this, actually, it was occurring in probably extremely cold week. So when we're out there, we're able to walk around a little bit and you can see the, what, where they're spraying the water onto the building. The ice that was building up from the water spray was, it's probably feet thick. And it's just, it was an incredible, incredible scene to see what was occurring there. That business has been, as mentioned, was there probably at least a hundred years in that same location. And it's so sad to see the, what occurred. And there's, there's no, I don't believe, I'm not an expert, but I don't believe that that building is recoverable. But what's important is, I know Steve Forster from our Commerce Department's already been out talking or talking with people. We have to do everything we can, you know, moving forward to once this seems completely taken care of, to help SPS rebuild. And obviously, we'd love for them to stay in Abington. There's hundreds of people that are employed by the community there. And, you know, it would be, it would be a loss for not only Abington, but for Montgomery County to see SPS Technologies pull out. But I'm sure we'll try to do everything we can to, to help them stay right here in Montgomery County and in Abington. You know, I just wanted, I just want to say one other thing. I was able to walk around, I was in the command centers and all that. And what you, what I saw, what I experienced, it was just amazing watching these teams working so well together as a well-oiled machine. And we forget sometimes because we only point out these big disasters that are occurring. But this is a very common setup. This is a very common, this is, I don't want to say routine, but they do this day in and day out. Every time there's fires throughout Montgomery County and beyond, this is, this is what they're there for. And probably ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of the people that showed up to fight that fire are all volunteers. And we need to make sure that we recognize the fact that these people are like you and I, but we would run away from the fire and they're running to it. And it's amazing because they, they leave their places of employment and what, you know, whatever they got going on, and they're there for us. And we always got to make sure we remember that. Because without these volunteers, I don't know what we, we would be, you know? And a lot of fire companies are working really hard to get more volunteers. Some departments have more than others, so we want to encourage everyone. And like we mentioned before numerous times, I want to think as a county that we did is we put that tax rebate in place for our EMS firefighters. So it's, it's a, it's a good, it's at least something that we're able to do as, as, as showing our appreciation. But always please remember to thank them for all their hard work because they are a true brotherhood and sisterhood of Montgomery County when it comes to emergency management. And we've got to make sure we continue to support and thank them for all their efforts. And our, our employees in our emergency management and our hazmat teams here in Montgomery County, they did an incredible job as well. It's just, it's just, like I said, it's amazing watching them in action and how well, like a well-defined team they are. So it's just, it's just amazing. So a couple other things going on. When I was leaving this morning, my wife told me to make sure that I mention that it is National Pet Day. So if you have pets, make sure that you give a little extra special attention to your pets because, you know, she wanted to remind me, it's not, we have two German shorthaired pointers, so there are pets. But, so it is National Pet Day. I was able, we get to go to a lot of ribbon cuttings. I'll just touch on this real quick. Raising Canes opened up another location, Old Montgomery Mall location. And I just want to, I mean, if you're in that area, stop in. They, well, I'll tell you what, when they do a ribbon cutting, they, they had North Penn High School band performing, they had students there. It was just, it was just an incredible event. And it was one of those collaborative type ribbon cuttings where three, I believe it was three different chambers pulled together to help and promote that ribbon cutting. We had Eastern Montgomery County Chamber, the Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Chamber of Commerce of Greater Montgomery County. I think I got that right. But they're all there and there was, I mean, the, the, the people started lining up at like five AM because they were given free chicken fingers to the first, whatever it was, the first hundred people. And they had raffles for who would win free food for a year. So it was just a great event. I was so happy I was able to stop over there. We did attend as commissioners earlier, or last week, the Township Managers Consortium. It was a broad opportunity to talk with all the township managers and township leadership throughout Montgomery County. We tried a lot of information, it was great to be there and talk with them and hear what's going on in their townships, as well as we're telling them what, what we've been doing and what's going on in Montgomery County. So it was, it was a great event. And then I was also able to attend the Local Emergency Planning Committee meeting last week, which is kind of interesting because I was there last week learning about how they've worked together to put these plans and different things in place. And then I just saw some of this stuff coming together and being executed on this week. So definitely coincidence, I don't, you know? But it was, it was another, a good meeting to be at to see what's going on. And then finally, or two other things real quick. One is, is that there is a cross-county, I almost called it cross-country, but cross-county trail open house. County Commissioners are hosting an open house next week focused on Section C, the cross-county trail. The open house will be February twenty seventh, six thirty PM to eight PM at the Willow Grove YMCA. This is an opportunity to learn about the county's design and engineering work on this section of the trail. Section C will be approximately 1.7 miles in length and connected to the existing trail loop at the Willow Grove YMCA in Upper Moreland Township with the Penny Pack Trail. Once completed, the entire cross-country, I think it's again, I think a cross-country running. The entire cross-county trail is planned to stretch from Conshohocken into the west to Penny Pack Trail into the east for a total of seventeen point five miles. And one of the things that we always enjoy as county commissioners is our Way to Go winners this month. And I have the opportunity to present them this, this time around. And first up, and I believe as he is an attendance, is our friend Gerald Content. He is our garage attendant in our Fleet and Transportation Department. Gerald helps people find a fee at home as they enter the garage here at One Montgomery Plaza. He brings a constant smile and sense of positivity that resonates with the coworkers and visitors, and he's always available to assist when called upon. And he does an incredible job down there. And every morning when they come in and I see him, he has that smile and he's just a, you know, great, happy employee and wants to make sure everyone has a sunshine type day. So thank you for everything that you're doing. Next up is Sharon Joyce, who's a cross-system specialist in our Early Learning Resource Center within the Department of Health and Human Services. Sharon is described by her colleagues as caring and personable. She is always available to find questions for those who need help. Next up is Michelle Minnick. I believe she's here. Michelle, you here? Oh, there she is in the back. She's in our revenue, she's a Revenue Development Specialist in our Treasurer's Office. Michelle is an expert when it comes to dog, fishing, and hunting licenses. She truly cares about those she serves and never hesitates to go above and beyond for someone in need, so thank you. And we have Terry Root, who is a criminal file investigator in our Trails Division of the District Attorney's Office, Trials Division, sorry. I had Trails undermined. Terry is diligent throughout and is meticulous in her job. She takes pride in her work and she is always one step ahead, making sure others have what they need without even asking. And finally, we have Robert Wilson, who is a GIS scopographer in our Board of Assessments and Appeals. For over fifteen years, Bob has been a pillar of the Board of Assessments Mapping Division. He is steadfast, highly skilled mapper and critical thinker. His coworkers say everyone could use someone like Bob on their team. So again, I want to congratulate all of our, on for this month's, boy, Way to Go winners. So, and I think who's present this evening, what, this, I'm really.
You want my coffee?
Yeah. If you're present here right now, come on up.
Very much, thank you.
Come over here, over here.
One, two.
And if I could just give Gerald an extra shout out. How long have you been with the county? Twenty years. Yeah. So we just wanted to acknowledge you in this, in this special way and all of our Way to Go winners. But I want to thank you for always getting me out of the parking lot safely and making sure that I don't hit another concrete pole in a parking lot. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll move on to a program update on the Monaco Forward Loan Program. I'll ask Steve Forster to cover this. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present an update to you on the Monaco Forward Loan Program. In keeping with the Eagles theme, I will slightly misquote Coach Nick Sirianni that to be great, it takes a lot of great people, it takes great teamwork. And so the Monaco Forward Loan Program is a cooperative initiative between the Redevelopment Authority and the County Commerce Department. We are very grateful for the work that we do with Alya Stanger and Pam Finnegan at the RDA, their Volunteer Board, and their Volunteer Loan Committee. That group of people, along with staff from the Commerce Department, is really what makes this program work so well. It's a revolving loan fund that was commenced in 2015. And just for your information, revolving loan fund means that the funds are loaned out and then when they are repaid, they are then available to be re-loaned out again. That's the purpose of the revolving loan fund, to continue to support growth of existing businesses in Montgomery County. In the first eight years of the program, eight loans were approved. In 2024, this last year, your administration and the RDA approved three loans. So we're ramping up our progress and our utilization considerably. In the past nine years, the Monaco Forward Loan Program has funded ten loans totaling $2.85 million across nine diverse Montgomery County municipalities from Pottstown to Hatfield. A little bit about the process, just so you understand what happens before these loans arrive at your desk. We work, our staff, Caitlin Langdon and the rest of our staff work extensively with applicants to vet them for eligibility, to make sure that what they want to spend the money on is an eligible use, and to make sure that all the guidelines that we have are properly met. And there is a lot of documentation that each applicant has to submit. So it does take some time for them to get their paperwork in and to get all of that straight. Once we have a complete application, we send it to underwriting. And so the underwriter will then evaluate all of the materials submitted and create a credit memo that will be, that is sent back to our office for review. We then will either edit it or pass it along to the RDA Loan Committee. The RDA Loan Committee is made up of volunteers in the community that are bankers, real estate lawyers, and other folks that are willing to serve. And they have a great deal of expertise with what we call commercial and industrial loans, you know, for businesses. And they ask very good questions, they're very thorough, very detailed. So with that committee, that committee has the option to either approve it or recommend it for approval, or deny it, or recommend that it be denied, or recommend it with conditions. And typically, the conditions are a request for additional documentation or other information. And once all of that is satisfied, it will go to the RDA Board for their approval. And then following their approval, it comes to you for final approval. So I just go through all that to let you know, there's a lot that goes into this. It's well-vetted, each of these loans. We are very grateful for these businesses in Montgomery County, the owners of whom are taking a risk with their own capital to invest in our economy here and the growth of our economy and create jobs. And so we want to be able to help those companies, as many as we can, to grow even faster than they could with simply their own capital. And that's the purpose of the Monaco Forward Loan Program. So today, $2.85 million have been invested in ten job-creating projects, which has leveraged a total overall investment of $38 million. So with each project that we are loaning money into, there is a larger capital stack in that project. And that $38 million is the total of that larger capital stack. What that means is thirteen dollars of direct economic impact in Montgomery County for every one dollar that is loaned into the program. The Monaco Forward Loan Program has created or retained 195 jobs since inception. Three of the ten loans have been repaid completely, and all the other existing loans are in good standing and being repaid according to terms. And the Monaco Forward Loan Program has never had a default that went uncured. This is just a chart that shows you the businesses that have been financed, the industry in which they serve, the loans were made, the municipality, this is what we use to track it, the loan amount, and the jobs created in a three-year period. See, there's 165 jobs, thirty of which, thirty additional jobs retained for a total of 195 jobs. And you see it's nearly $38 million in total investment, and that's the thirteen to one leverage ratio that we see there, which we think is a very good investment of taxpayer money, especially since it gets repaid and we get to re-loan it again. Next slide, please. So what's coming? What's in the pipeline? In November, you, the Board, approved a $990,000 loan to KMM Group, which is a machining and grinding company, and that will close this month. It was approved, as we said, in November. There is, after that, $1.2 million remaining in the county fund. And it's an additional $1.1. 1.1 remaining on the RDA balance sheet, that is monies that have been repaid and are available to be re-loaned. So we have approximately $2.3 million that we can re-loan. Currently, there's a million-dollar loan to a lower Providence manufacturing company that has received RDA loan committee recommendation of approval. They've requested a little bit more documentation, which we have received, submitted to the underwriter, and that should go before the RDA board at their next meeting and then come to you for approval. And we love these guys. They're bringing about 30 manufacturing jobs to lower Providence Township, and that's just one shift. As they expand into two shifts, it'll double that number. We have anticipated repayments in the amount of $970,000 in 2026. And then between today and the end of 2027, we anticipate another $215,000 being repaid, uh, over the course of these next two years. That's it, really. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I want to thank you all very much for your support of this important program, and thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Steve, I just want to make sure, um, that you, when you talked about the month, the repayment of the loans, what also, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but what also goes into that bucket of money that comes back is, is the interest gained as well?
Yes.
So, um, not only because we're making an investment into the community, we're helping these businesses, but what, within that investment, there is a, you know, lack of a better way of saying it, there is a return, which then helps us grow that program or make, make additional money available for other businesses in Montgomery County as well.
That is exactly right. The 1.1 million that's on the RDA balance sheet is a combination of both principal and interest that has been repaid during the life of that loan. And so, yes, you are correct.
And forgive me if I missed this. Did you have any stats on how many people apply or seek out the loan and?
We have, so in 2024, we had several companies, in addition to the three that you approved, there was one that was not recommended for approval, went through the process, got to that point, and, uh, the loan committee asked to modify it, and the borrower did not want to modify his business plan. So that was declined. And there have been several other applicants that kind of come and go. They start to put their paperwork in, and then they don't quite finish the process. Um, so I would say that they are still somewhere in that pipeline. Um, and so that's it. We, we, that we talked to a lot of people about it, and a lot of people come back and ask questions about it, but not as many have stepped forward to go through the entire application process. But we continue to advertise it as much as we can.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right. So next, uh, bring up our deputy COO, Stephanie Tipton.
Uh, I will continue with the Eagles theme, wearing my Eagles green today. I will do it as long as it's appropriate. So, um, so good morning, commissioners. It is my pleasure to introduce an exciting new initiative, um, that will be strengthening the way that Montgomery County government operates, and that's the Office of Innovation, Strategy, and Performance. The office represents a transformation of the recovery office, taking what we learned from ARPA-funded programs, where data-driven decision-making led to more effective outcomes, um, and embedding those principles permanently in county government. With this office, we're building on the momentum to ensure that our policies, our programs, and the services that we provide are responsive, well-managed, and sustainable for the long term. Uh, before I get into the meat of the presentation, I, I want to recognize and thank the entire team at the recovery office, many of whom are here today. If you guys just want to wave your hands, let's give them, uh, please, a round of applause. I want to thank them for the incredible work that they have done in managing the county's distribution of ARPA funds. Their dedication and expertise is why we are here today and have ensured that these resources were invested strategically and effectively in Monco communities. As we transition into the next phase of the work, they'll continue to staff the new office and bring their work to the next level. The Office of Innovation, Strategy, and Performance will drive operational excellence, innovation, and data-informed decision-making. It will partner with county departments to improve service delivery, enhance project execution, and ensure that taxpayer dollars are spent wisely and effectively. This is really about building a government that is more proactive, transparent, and results-oriented, um, where our investments and programs are backed by evidence, resident input, and continuous evaluation. Uh, you can go to the next slide. Thank you. Uh, so this purpose, uh, the purpose of the office is simple but impactful, uh, to ensure Montgomery County government is strategic in its priorities, in its approach, and accountable in its execution. So the office will focus on, uh, four main areas, uh, strengthening service delivery by analyzing processes and working across departments to implement improvements, developing and trapping, uh, performance metrics so we can measure our impact and refine our efforts, ensuring fiscal responsibility by identifying cost savings and making data-informed budget recommendations, and then bringing innovation to everyday government operations, um, so that we can continuously improve how we serve our residents here in Montgomery County. Uh, this office will act as a resource for all county departments, helping them navigate complex challenges, improve their internal processes, and ultimately deliver better results for Montgomery County. You can go to the next slide. At the heart of this office are our core values, um, that will guide the work and its interactions across county government. First and foremost is transparency, making information accessible and decisions clear, collaboration, partnering across departments with community organizations and with residents, people-centered, designing services that meet the needs of those who use them, curiosity, encouraging new ideas and continuous learning, and sustainability, ensuring that the changes last beyond the single, a single project of this administration. This means that every project that the office undertakes will be grounded in these values, from streamlining procurement to optimizing grant management to improving public access to county data. You can go to the next slide, please. So to carry out this work, um, the office will be led by a team of, uh, those who are expert in strategy, data analytics, and project management, and will work closely with county leadership and department heads. Uh, the project director will oversee the office's strategic priorities and ensure that all initiatives align with county goals. The strategy director will focus on stakeholder engagement, community collaboration, and performance evaluation, ensuring that the projects that the office do, um, reflects the needs of residents and county employees. And then the director of data and analytics will lead efforts to improve data governance, track performance indicators, and develop public-facing dashboards that enhance transparency. In addition to these roles, the office will be staffed by project managers, business analysts, and a data analyst, as well as administrative staff. And the current recovery office team is providing the initial staffing, uh, for the office. This structure, um, will allow the office to be proactive rather than reactive, and will guide, help to guide county operations with a focus on long-term impact and sustainability. Uh, so the work of, um, this office will be organized around six key, um, focus areas, so strategic planning and priority alignment, ensuring that county goals are translated into actionable, measurable plans, uh, resident-focused service delivery, engaging frontline staff and residents to co-design service improvements, cost savings and process improvement, so identifying opportunities to streamline operations and optimize resources, data analytics and performance tracking, so establishing performance metrics to track the impact of county services, project management and grant administration, so working with the new grants office to provide expertise that ensures county-funded initiatives are successfully executed, and community engagement, working alongside residents, businesses, and community partners to ensure county services remain responsive and inclusive. So for example, one of the first projects the office will undertake is assessing and improving our procurement operations, so ensuring that the county is making data-informed purchasing decisions and ensuring that our county dollars go farther, and the contracted services we provide are outcome-driven and transparent. Um, another example is developing a county-wide data dashboard where residents and decision-makers alike can access real-time insights, um, about key county services and working with departments to develop key performance indicators. I can move to the next slide, please. The transformation will not happen overnight, but we have a clear roadmap to ensure a smooth transition. So currently, we are in phase one. Uh, the recovery office team is, um, beginning their transition into the new, uh, office structure with additional recruitment to bring on two vacant, uh, to fill two vacant roles in the office. Um, the next phase is really looking at operational realignment, so establishing county-wide data governance policies, developing a reporting dashboard, and conducting initial assessments of high-priority county services. Phase three, we will, uh, pilot projects and begin scaling the work, so testing solutions in key departments. Um, and then phase four, continuous improvement. Um, so this is really how we are going to make sure that the work that we do is sustainable. So embedded, embedding best practices across county government and ensuring departments can sustain and build upon the progress made. So this phased approach, um, ensures that the foundation is strong for the new office and that county staff are equipped with the right tools, processes, and training to carry the work forward. Let me go to the last side. So in closing, um, what I will leave you with is that the new Office of Innovation, Strategy, and Performance is an investment in how we govern and how we serve our residents. By taking data-informed, collaborative, and forward-thinking approach, uh, we are ensuring that Montgomery County continues to be a leader in effective and responsive government. And this is about more than just improving operations or saving money. It's about delivering real results for the people who rely on county services every single day. Um, so the team looks forward to working with our colleagues, county leadership, and the Montgomery County community to bring this vision to life. So thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I'll just say thank you for the presentation and just your thoughtfulness at putting this together, and I think everyone can tell that, uh, this isn't just a name change, that we actually have put a lot of work into what the office could look like, and thank you for leading that. And I'm a huge nerd, so this is extremely exciting.
As am I.
But it also, it just, you know, you're, you're affirming this idea that local government can be a place that we innovate and that we continually work to better serve our constituents. So that's what this is all about.
And thank you for their commitment to making this happen.
Got it.
Yeah, just want to thank you for your leadership and our recovery office team. You all are rock stars. I've had the pleasure of seeing your work, uh, in action, so I'm looking forward to the work that you'll continue to do. And, um, you know, I would just say that this is something that we've been talking about for some time, right? And so to Commissioner McKeeshaw's point, uh, this is not us just slapping a name, you know, on the, on, you know, on a, on an existing department, really was intentional in terms of, um, you know, the work that we know we need to do to deliver on our promises to residents. So thank you for your leadership on that, and thank you for accelerating, um, getting this stuff.
Sure. Thank you.
So, great presentation.
Thank you.
Um, I, I, your timeline, I would like to see it a little bit faster.
Okay.
Stretching, and I think that we're missing a lot of opportunities stretching all the way into 2026.
Yep.
I think that this goes in alignment with, as commissioners, what we've been talking about. I know that I've talked a lot about departmental analysis and program analysis and all that. Uh, this puts us in a great position to be able to do all that. I'm really excited about it, but I also look forward to seeing the KPIs from this department that we're establishing as well.
Yes.
Because we want to make sure that even though we've put a new team in place, or we're transitioning a team with a lot of skill and a lot of talent, but we want to make sure that we establish KPIs as well. And when you're going through your slides and all that, I think what we, uh, and I like that, you know, starting in a procurement office is a good place to start, not that they're doing a bad job or anything like that.
Not at all.
But it's a, it's a starting point to, to kind of look at process and procedures and all that and see what we could do to become, you know, as efficient as possible. But I think that, um, and I, maybe through your slides or through what you're thinking is, uh, planning, is the financial analysis of the money being spent. Just because we're spending money doesn't mean that we should be spending money.
Right.
You know, so we, and I think that when you go through each of the, the responsibilities and all that, financial analysis didn't jump out. Um, and, you know, ROI, all those things are, you know, become extremely important, uh, especially when we're, when you look at the size of our budget. So you did talk about, you know, being, spending is, being as efficient as possible, which I totally support, but we really got to, you know, utilize some of these financial strategies, financial planning, you know, analysis and all that to, uh, ensure that when we establish KPIs, there is a financial portion of, within those KPIs as you're working across projects, and we're looking at, you know, that spending. And I know sometimes we don't want to hear this, but there may be a program that we shouldn't be doing anymore, and that will be lifted up. I don't know. I'm not saying there is a program out there, uh, Steve's looking at me like, not, not, not Commerce. No, I'm only kidding. But there may be, who knows? I don't know. And that's what's important about what this team is going to be doing. So I'm excited to see, um, what comes out in the future. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll just, I'll just add one thing for the sake of department heads or row officers or others that are listening that think, you know, uh, this office could be helpful in a project they've been wanting to do, or, um, you know, I'm sure there's going to be a plan to reach out to them.
Yes.
And we're going to talk about, you know, how to prepare, but I welcome, you know, any department head or row officer's, uh, engagement and, you know, making proposals, you know, and hopefully we can kind of make a difference across the board.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Clapping for data.
Was that her first presentation? She did a great job.
Okay. Uh, with that, we will move to, uh, the first public comment section, which is public comment on today's pending votes, resolutions, bids, RFPs, or contracts. Are there any comments on those subjects?
No public comment.
No comment? Okay. None? Okay. All right. So we will move to approval of the minutes. Uh, is there a motion to approve the February 6, 2025 minutes of the Montgomery County Board Commissioners' Meeting? Mr. DeBello, is there a second?
Second.
Senator DeBello, Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are approved. Moving on to resolutions. Ask Scott France, our planning commissioner, to join us.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, the first item we have is related to our Community Planning Assistance Program. Um, as you know, this is a service we provide to municipal governments, where we provide the planning skills and, uh, staff on a contract basis, typically a three-year term. And this is the last, I might have said this last meeting, but this truly is the last of this cycle, uh, renewing, uh, communities. We have 34 total municipalities in this program, plus four regional planning groups, which can have four to eight municipalities, some of which have contracts, some don't, uh, within each of those. So, uh, we, it has quite the impact and imprint on Montgomery County. Uh, the ones we have before you today by resolution are for Lansdale Borough and Horsham Township. And due to paperwork, um, these actually are termed to actually have started January 1st, 2025, as continuing, uh, contracts from a previous, uh, three-year term, and they'll expire on December 31st, 2027. Uh, I'll go through the two communities. Lansdale Borough, uh, the work involved will be the completion of an active transportation plan, uh, design support for Railroad Plaza, and zoning assistance for the downtown and potential housing initiatives. Uh, that, total cost of that contract is $124,608, with a 50% share for the municipality of $62,304. And the second community is Horsham Township. Uh, Horsham will be, uh, consist of a comprehensive plan implementation, including ordinance updates and grant writing, as well as attending planning commission meetings and providing technical support. Uh, that contract is for, uh, $93,456, with the municipal share being $46,728. And the resolution with those details are before.
Uh, any questions? Is there a motion to approve resolution number one as described by Scott France?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Senator DeBello, is there any board comment? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Um, next resolution.
Yes, and the second one is related to a short-term contract program where we do enrollment projection studies for school districts. Uh, however, this particular one is unique, and, uh, actually our first one, uh, for a Montgomery County Technical, uh, School. Uh, this is the North Montgo Technical Career Center, one of four within the county. Uh, this, this center draws And they've asked us, they approached us if we could look at, knowing that we do enrollment trends, if we could look at their school, which is a little different than a typical school district in terms of just looking at how housing impacts and how demographic impacts. This will involve more additional study on types of careers and the programs offered and what the rates of, that they draw to. These schools are, are really interesting, and if you, people aren't aware of what they do, they go really beyond what might be the, you know, mindset of a BOTAC school that we might be familiar with, if we haven't experienced. But there are so many careers and opportunities that go into these schools, it's really a valuable resource for students within the county. So we'll be doing this study again on a short-term contract, which is a little different. It will run from March 15th to May 31st, and the total cost of this study is $6,426. The school's share of that work will be $4,819. And, answer any questions?
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number Two as described by Scott France?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Maureen Calder will raise a TFR approval.
I'm here, Commissioners, on behalf of Ms. Calder today. So before you today is a request by Gemma Services, a nonprofit corporation that provides educational and mental health services for a resolution approving the issuance of a series of tax-exempt revenue bonds totaling up to $32 million, of which $31 million will fund capital improvements in their new additional campus to be located in the 5100 block of Butler Pike in Plymouth Meeting. The remaining $1 million approximately will refinance existing bonds that are now reaching maturity. The bonds are to be issued by the Montgomery County Industrial Development Authority and have been approved by the IDA pursuant to a TFR hearing and resolution dated February 5th of this year. The hearing was also properly advertised on the IDA website from January 29th through February 5th of this year. Because the refinancing and this new financing is for a Montgomery County-based entity, the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, or TFR, requires approval by the highest elected official in the county where the funds are to be utilized. Approval of this bond issue will benefit the health, safety, and welfare of residents of Montgomery County by maintaining the fiscal health and operational excellence of Gemma Services. It will add additional capacity. They will be able to serve approximately 130 additional new students at this new campus and by creating 37 new jobs at the campus. As always, neither the General Credit nor the Taxing Authority of Montgomery County are pledged as security for these bonds. Thus, the county takes no financial risk nor obligation in this transaction, and it does not in any way impact the county's balance sheet. The IDA is simply a conduit issuer. We therefore request your approval of the resolution as presented by the solicitor approving the issuance of the bonds. Thank you for your consideration.
Any questions?
Thank you for pointing out that last part, because when you hear big numbers like $30 million, you know, kind of, it's like, that's taxpayer mind, but no, it's just, this is a process that has to be followed. And so again, thank you for, you know, pointing that out.
You got it.
That we don't have an obligation to it, we're just following, go through the process.
Exactly right. Yeah, the decision's that easier.
Right.
All right, so is there a motion to approve Resolution Number Three as described by Steve Forster?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, next up, Pam Lawn.
Hello, my name is Pam Lawn from the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services, Office of Public Health. We are here to just propose changes to the Montgomery County Public Health Code, Chapters 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 13, and 16. Just a quick overview of the changes. We updated a definition, we added a definition regarding department and permit holder. We also added a section in these chapters for following directives to add clarity regarding responsibility. We updated the public bathing place code, that is for pools, public pools, to reflect the most recent updates as per the CDC Model Aquatic Health Code. So we're just requesting your approval for these changes.
Thank you. Any questions? Sounds good. Is there, is there a motion to approve Resolution Number Four as described by Pam Lawn?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we're reviewing Commissioners' appointments to Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority. Is there a motion to appoint as described on Exhibit G5?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. I will second the motion. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sustain.
Sustain, motion passes. So moving on to the personnel list, I'll ask Marty Moss or Megan to join us. Go ahead.
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioners' Department's personnel list. It's a three-page document dated February 19th, 2025, with a timestamp of 11:27 a.m. These transactions have been reviewed by management and are now presented for consideration.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the February 20, 2025 personnel presentation?
So moved. Oh, sorry.
Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, so moving on to advertisements, bids, and RFPs under Exhibit A. Is there a motion to approve the advertisements, bids, and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Moving on to awards of contracts.
Could you separate 6, 7, 23, and 25, please?
Before we make motion, I'm going to ask Jesse King to come up and speak to this topic. Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. In keeping with this board's desire to provide transparency to the contracts before this county, I'd like to give some background information on some amendments that are before you today, specifically Amendment Six, dealing with the eight prime contractors for the Justice Center project. Again, these cover eight different contractors for a total of 138 specific change orders. I am not going to go through all 138 specific changes today. I think everybody in the room would appreciate that, but what I would like to do is talk briefly about the approval process that we go through for each of these change orders, group them into why and how they come about, and then speak briefly about the financial impact on the project and the county associated with each group. Start, starting off with the approval process. Each and every one of these change orders is approved by our design team, is then approved by our construction management team, and then finally it is approved by our Director of Capital Projects, David Hahn. Only at that point, after those three approvals are in place, and sometimes there is some back and forth between the contractors, are those approvals, get the final stamp of approval, and they are forwarded to our solicitor's office for whatever approval or review they would like to do before being presented to this board for approval for final payment. So that is the process that we stick to, and that is the process that we have done for all 138 of these change orders before the board today. These change orders date back to the origination of these contracts, so some of them are recent, some of them go back a few years. So it's a grouping of different change orders that are all being presented at once to, for efficiency, so that we're not doing 10 of these every single week at every single board meeting. We thought it was prudent to present the board with all of these groupings at one time. There are a number of reasons or types that I would like to go into today, and I think they are referenced on your agenda. The first, a large portion of these change orders are the result of errors and omissions in a design. In short, a contractor uncovers a defect in design and must make a change in order to correct that situation. This is a complex project. It involves the demolition of an existing structure, building a new structure that is attaching to a historic building on a significant grade. It would be unreasonable to assume that the design that we purchased would address every possible situation that would come up during the construction process. We trust to those contractors to uncover those design failures or omissions, bring them to our attention, receive our approval, and to make the corrections necessary to make sure the project proceeds correctly. I mean, those type of change orders are the ones that make certain that the project is being built correctly. If we were to ignore them, we would potentially have a situation where the building was built incorrectly, and nobody wants that. With approval today, the expense paid to the contractor, this expense will be paid to the contractor with the understanding that a reconciliation and analysis will address this expense at the end of the phase, meaning potentially there will be a negative change order crediting the county in association with these errors and omissions. I cannot give you that exact number at this point, but I can tell you that that process will take place at the end of the contract to address all of those errors and omissions and determine who is responsible for those funds. But at this point, it is our obligation to pay those contractors for the work that has been done. Those changes total approximately $2.6 million of the just under $5 million on the agenda today. A second noteworthy classification are county owner requests for change. These orders represent changes that may be outside the design, but the county feels are required or suggested due to changes in planning or conditions at the site. In the simplest form, this can mean that something was uncovered during construction that was not anticipated by the design team, and it was not their fault for not uncovering that. It could be unsuitable soil conditions that you can't build on, where they have to go into more work to make sure that we can build on those conditions. That's the simplest form of, of change under this category. The much more complex change would be a radical change, I don't use the word radical, a large change in design of, you know, a whole operational model within the building. I will speak to one of those momentarily, specifically that is a large part of this group, and I'll explain why that potentially serves as a financial benefit to the county. In total, the change orders across all primes for owner requested changes is 1.9, just over $1.9 million. I'd like to talk specifically about one grouping of change orders associated with those owners' requests. At the time of the design of this project, prior to the COVID pandemic, the Office of Domestic Relations was to have a footprint on the second and third floors of, or first and second floors, excuse me, they're stacked in a strange way, of the Justice Center. They were to take up approximately 25,000 square feet of that facility. Due to operational changes brought on by COVID, meaning work remotely, other factors, we were informed from the Office of Domestic Relations that they no longer needed a footprint in that building. Again, this was after the design was finalized and purchased, contracting documents were finalized. It would be inappropriate for the county at that point to ignore that and build the building in accordance with the design for Domestic Relations to occupy those spaces. At that point, we needed to make a change. We knew that the Office of the District Attorney had a sincere desire to be in that building. It was appropriate with adjacencies and security measures, so we authorized the change to bring the District Attorney into the building to occupy those two floors. They're thrilled with that decision, but it came along with a cost. There is the cost for a design change, as well as the construction changes that are on the table today. Those approximately total just over $800,000 in construction changes to bring the District Attorney into that building. This move potentially, it does, it represents a significant return on investment of that $800,000, because at the time of the design, prior to that change, we did not have a home planned at that point for the District Attorney. Our options were use capital dollars to build a new facility to house the District Attorney, 25,000 square feet, or lease or rent a facility in close proximity to the courthouse, which is a difficult ask, that they could run their operations out of. Now, back of a napkin sketch as to what that would cost the county at current building rates, building a 25,000-square-foot facility could be in excess of 15 to 25 million dollars, depending on what we build. If we were to rent a facility, and I can tell you that I am looking at, for other departments and other options at this point, we are actively looking at the rental market for buildings approximately that size. We're looking at $16 to $23 a square foot with camp charges and build-out charges easily half a million, three-quarters of a million dollars annually to house the District Attorney. So keeping that in mind, these change orders are a thoughtful and financially responsible move to move forward with the project. One other I'd like to speak to within the owners' changes is there is a change order within those 138 for Land Connect. It's for $485,000. It is to install a radio repeater system in the new building. Question, of course, shouldn't we have thought that that needs to go to the building in the first place? We did. It was within the owner's budget. We transferred it to one of these contractors because it made more sense for them to do it at the time. So that $400,000 is not an increase to the overall budget of the project, it is an increase to one contractor on your agenda today, and it is a deduction or a debit from, or a credit, excuse me, to the cap, the owner's budget that will be sorted at the end of the project. So that is essentially a wash, the $485,000 for Land Connect for those repeaters. Finally, the third type of change that I want to talk, to talk on briefly is charge-back situations. In its simplest form, it's a situation that arises when one contractor creates a condition that incurs an expense on another contractor, be it damage, be it accidental, be it building something in the wrong order. But that situation requires one contractor to incur an additional expense. We can't at this time transfer that expense to the responsible party. We have to pay out the contractors in real time for the work that they did, and that too will be reconciled at the end of the project. So those total just under, just over $250,000 that we anticipate being a negative change order to another contractor. In all, these change orders at this point, regardless of the money we may receive back in credits, only total just over 2% of the total project cost, total construction cost for this phase of the project. I am told from our construction management team that that is well within a reasonable amount of change orders for a project of this cost. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Do you want, so you, it's basically three main buckets is what you kind of...
We put them into three buckets.
Right, it's three main buckets. So, you know, the one bucket, I'm going to go in a different order maybe, but the one, the one bucket is to reconfigure a portion of the, the new facility to accommodate a group that we weren't originally putting in or swapping out, we're actually swapping one group.
Right.
Right.
In that bucket as well, our other owner requesting change orders.
Right, so, and that, and the long term of that change of the, what was one, like almost $2 million, because it was like 1.9 million for configurable, configurable changes, another 800,000?
The 800, the 800,000, I think it was 806,000, I don't have to know in front of me.
Well, right.
$800,000 was for the construction work to make those changes, for just that portion.
Right.
For switching DRO with the District Attorney.
Right.
Now, there's also construction management charges and architectural charges that are in front of you today that were passed at a prior agenda months ago. in front of you today that were passed at a prior agenda months ago. But they too are not significant when you consider the return on investment.
Right.
Of weighing that cost of renting or building a facility for the DA.
And then there's another bucket that is related to what the project, like being extended.
Correct. That is not what is in front, on specifically number six today. That bucket would be, if another item on this agenda is.
Seven then, I'm sorry, then what's seven?
So seven is that.
Right.
That's what it's about, yeah. Seven, I was saying six has nothing.
Okay.
May have a little bit to do with that, but seven is because the project is extended.
Right.
And part of SOM's responsibility is construction administration. You know, because the project goes longer, that construction administration period goes longer, and they are incurring additional expense because their people are still on site, they are still reviewing submissions as we go forward. I can't speak to exactly what will happen with those expenses. That will be to be determined at a later time.
I think when you gave the last project update a few months ago, or one of the updates, I can't remember if I asked you this question or not, but when this project was established and the funding sources were all laid out and budgeting was all identified, was there a contingency bucket created?
There is, there's contingency built into these contracts and in the owner's budget. So there was contingency built into, the owner's budget is a whole different list of enumerated things, the SOMs, the SCANSKs, furniture. Do you mind if Dave Hon.
Well, just, just.
On that?
I'm just, what I'm trying to get to is that, I've done, I've done projects, not as large as this, but I've done large projects in the past in other positions I've had. And what we would, we would have a bucket that would be built into the budget that could be, that you would pull maybe cost overruns or change orders or like, and typically it could be anywhere between a 5 and 10% of the overall project, that you would have this, you know, bucket of money that's been established, so that way you actually would be utilizing that to deal with some of the things that you've talked about this morning. And I'm just, I can't remember if I asked that before or not. I don't, if you want to.
I'm going to invite Dave up.
Yeah, that's fine.
I know generally, but I think Dave did more, Dave's more. This is Dave Hon, Capital Projects Director.
Good morning, commissioners. So to answer your question, the budget was spaced out over three phases.
Right.
So while there was not contingency put into actual construction, it was put into the owner's budget. So there's four buckets, phase one, phase two, phase three, and the owner's budget. The owner's budget covered the FFNE, which is the furniture furnishing and equipment, covered all the architectural and construction management costs, and of course contingency, my time, my staff's time, just some of Jesse's time, is all figured into that. Some of the contracts for phase two had actual contingency dollars specified to specific items. For example, the general contractor had $600,000, rough numbers, in contingency dollars for unforeseen conditions and three other items. They've spent where we can legitimately take out of that contingency money, $106,000 of that. So $440,000 will be a deduct change order at some point in the project if we don't run into any more of those allocated contingencies. Every one of the primes out there had an allocation for certain things that weren't known about. The repeater system, we knew it had to go into the building. We couldn't figure out, and nobody wanted to take ownership of it. We put it in the owner's budget, and then we finally got Land Connect to put in the repeater system. So it was just moving money from.
Right.
What are they?
Right. Yeah, because I'm just trying to get my, you know, you know, commissioners were just coming into taking this project on, you know, and I'm never, I'll never sit here and tonic negatively about, I've said this before, negatively about prior decisions by previous boards, but we kind of inherit this project. And it puts us in a unique situation because this project was probably at least halfway through when we took office. And there's a, it's a very complicated project, and it's a very complicated financial strategy of how this project's being paid for and how it's being broke down with the different bonds and all that. So it's, and I know people come and, you know, they don't want to see additional money spent on this project. So it puts us in a very difficult situation because we can't stop it, we can't stop the project. Moving the DA's office in there from an ROI standpoint makes perfect sense. So the money that we are going to spend now, potentially what we're saving long-term outweighs this upfront cost, right? So that makes sense. And then, and then with all these projects, there's always this, at the end of the project, it's going to be who's going to, who's responsible for what. Do we have an idea of how long that will play out for? When we, when we start getting the conversations with the contractors as far as who's responsible for what and the possibility of recapping funds?
We're working with outside counsel right now to put all of that together, looking towards about eight months from now.
Okay. All right.
And the other money that's in that same bucket of the owner requested changes is about $1 million. Building was designed prior to COVID. Construction had started in 2019. There were changes, operational changes within the county that required some of those modifications to be made. We fought them, but we can't. Department operates differently than it did when the programming was done. We have to make the adjustments so that we continue with efficient county operations.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just ask one question, which is, you know, determining at the end of all this, how much of this we could supposedly, you know, get back, what would be the timeline for that?
I, there's other, there's other factors at play here that would influence that question that I'm not sure that we're at liberty to talk about.
Yeah. All right, so there's a privilege. I think, all right, what I would just suggest is we get into some of those further details in a separate session.
Absolutely.
Great, thanks. All right. So, is there a motion?
Well, I just want to separate six, seven, and 25.
So, do you want to, this is out on the agenda, so, and in general, because, you know, the staff does a lot of work to brief us and ask, you know, which contracts have the support to end up in, you know, in the agenda. So I'll just ask you to make a motion, if that's all right.
Make a motion what?
Whichever motion you would want to make.
All right, well, I make a motion that we approve one through five, eight through 22, and 23 and 4, 23, 24.
Okay, so is there a second?
Second, second up.
Okay, so any board comment?
I just, quick comment on nine, that's related to the library, I believe, the demolition of start of the library. That's definitely something that we need to do, no matter how we perceive forward with that building. But I think as that is going on, that we need to really actively get more discussions and conversations around what that building is going to become. I mentioned this before, that the conceptual plan that we were shown at one point was a good starting point, but I think that we really need to dive in deeper because that long-term project potentially is up to $65 million, and I'm, I have a hard time supporting the current direction of where it's going. But it's, I know, the demolition portion of this needs to be done because it will set us in the right direction of whatever we do moving forward. And then the other comment, the only other comment I have is on number 23 of the purchase of the vehicles, are any of those electric?
I don't believe so.
Well, they're not, or we don't know?
Well, I don't know for sure. As of yesterday, they weren't.
Okay, well, I just, well, in the future, when we're listing them out, I would prefer to see if that's something that we're considering or not.
Yeah.
I mean, we listed out the vehicles, but we didn't list out if any were.
So can we just be clear, because I think there's some, there was some numbering issues on.
Yeah.
That 23 was the purchase of the additional vehicles for the sheriff's department.
Okay. And then 25 being the contract with Dominion.
Right.
And then six and seven being the contracts that Mr. King.
Right. So I basically made a motion to approve everything except six, seven, and 25 at this point.
Six.
I just pulled out three, six, seven, and 25.
So just, just really quickly, thanks, Jesse and Dave, for giving us an overview. And I know we talk about this behind the scenes. And, you know, for me, it is one of those situations where we've started a project and we need to finish it. And so, and I don't have the luxury to vote against not finishing the project. So I would just say, let's, let's continue to keep our eye on the ball from a financial perspective. And I think there needs to be some, you know, if we don't vote to fund, you know, as commissioners, like when we're celebrating the opening of the Justice Center, that should be discussed as a board. So, thanks for, you didn't need to stand up, but I'm just.
Of course.
I don't have, you know, I did, yeah, because you did work for the DA. But yeah, like I don't have, I just want to publicly say, I don't have the luxury to not, we have to finish the project, right? So, and I look forward to the end of it because I know it's been an expensive project. But I think I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, I'll just comment, but this is a massive and complicated project, and thank you for walking me through it in recent weeks because, you know, I got to see very clearly how much of a difference that this will be to everyone who utilizes the courthouse, including, you know, everyday residents as well as, you know, the staff and everyone who works there. It's going to be important for many different security reasons, for the safety of the people that are there, you know, as victims, for the safety of the court staff, the judges. The design is very thoughtful, and it's just a major, major upgrade that's overdue. And so we don't want to slow it down, and I understand that there are going to be many moments where you have change orders and things that need to go one way or the other, but we have to keep it moving, and to the extent that we can save costs, you know, further down the line, we'll continue doing that work. And I know that you're meeting regularly, you know, with outside advisors who can really give you the best, you know, independent perspective in terms of how to handle certain issues that arise. And our team has tremendous experience, you know, on its own, but you also have a whole other layer that's supporting the work that you're doing and the decisions that we take, which is, you know, I think inspires confidence and knowing that there are so many aspects of that.
So I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
So the motion was one through five, and then eight through basically 24, and the comments that are being made are related to six and seven. So are we just openly commenting, or are we commenting on the motion?
So I'm going to vote no, so that's why, because I think we should vote on all of them.
Well, you already had a motion and a second.
Yeah, that's because it was all confusing, so, but.
Right, and there's board comment, so.
Right, but the motion, the motion didn't include, because I find it interesting because right away there was assumption, because I separate those, and I had a reason why I wanted to break those out, and then there was this assumption was right away that one of us may be voting no, and then, which was then allude to, well, we have to have a conversation around a celebration, and if commissioners don't support certain things. I don't even, I don't even understand the connection.
I'm still in my comment.
Well, you were done speaking, that's why I asked.
I wasn't.
Well, when you stopped speaking, I'm not sure. Next time I ask if there's anything else.
You said, I have a question, and so I was answering your question. I'm explaining why I'm voting no, and the reason is because I do support all the contracts that were in here, including the ones related to the Justice Center. Second point that I'd like to talk about is the Dominion voting contract. This is a basic contract that is essential to perform our voter services. This is for election day voting systems that will be used this year in a few months. Voting against this would disable our ability to conduct an election. So that's essential to me. I am voting no on your motion because it does not include that, and I think it's really important that when the staff does the work of putting together this set of contracts and awards, that that is essentially, you know, a function where they're assessing the full package and what has support and what doesn't, and we have to, you know, respect that process because, you know, once you start picking things apart, you may not have support for the whole thing. So that's why I'm voting no. I will propose a separate motion to vote on all of them. Any other comments? Okay, so seeing none. All in favor of the motion to approve contracts, yes, one through 25 with the exception of six, seven, and 25.
So are you making a separate motion to?
I will have.
This is what's confusing.
We need to have a vote on this one first, right? So I will propose that, you know, if this doesn't pass, I'll propose that. But the most on the table is related to one through 27, sorry, one through 25 with the exception of six, seven, and 25. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
I oppose it. And what do you want to do in terms of you making the emotional motion? Because I didn't fully understand what we were, what we were doing here.
There will need to be another motion there to, to anything from some or all of the other contracts and these contracts on the agenda.
Because my assumption was, my assumption was that this motion was to ensure that we voted for those, everything, so.
Why don't, you can still make a motion to approve the other things that are.
Right.
I just don't know why we're separate, like, so.
Yeah, so, okay, so that motion fails. I'll make a motion to approve the contracts as written in Exhibit B, one through 25. Is there a second?
A second what?
Second by Commissioner Winder, any board comment?
I'm going to abstain from the vote because I'm not playing these games. I'm not going to be forced into voting a full packet of stuff because there may be, may be one thing that I, or two that I might not have agreed with, or I might have had additional questions with, for. So I'm staying.
Okay. So my comment is just that, you know, I think part of governing is making difficult decisions. I would love to be able to vote for all of the spending in the budget and none of the taxes, and don't have the luxury. I don't have the luxury of doing that in, in governing. So it's, it's important that when we do the work and the staff does the work of putting together a package and a proposal and asking the commissioners, uh, if they support it, that we, that we treat it as such. And there aren't going to be cases where, you know, we have separate votes on things, but, um, that's got to be determined beforehand, um, if I'm going to go for it, not just either for myself.
So we're, so what you're saying is anything put in front of us, we vote yes?
No.
Well, I, again, your assumptions were made just because I wanted to separate something off. That's, that's, that's what's really amazing here. That's what I'm really blown away by because I wanted to separate. So.
Anyway, there's a motion on the table. Any other comments? So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Staying.
All opposed. All right, so the motion passes. Um, all right, moving on to awards of contract, uh, for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force, exhibit C. Uh, is there a motion to approve the contracts and awards amendments in the areas for Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached exhibit C?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wynder. Is there a second? Uh, seconded, I'll second it. Any board comment? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to general public comment, do we have any comments?
Chris Broke?
Brock.
Brock.
Hi, my name's Chris Brock. I'm from, uh, Abington Township. Um, I hate to bring this up again, but not as much as I hate that I need to bring it up again. Uh, at the last commissioner's meeting, Commissioner DeBella made a point that I thought was really good and I thought it needed to be addressed. It was about Elon Musk and what looked like an awful lot like the seagull or the Nazi salute he did at the inauguration and Laura Smith, the former supervisor at Tallamanceon, putting up a Facebook post showing Democrats doing the same thing. We can't pick and choose who we get mad at, I think is what the commissioner said. And I think that that's absolutely right. That's absolutely true. Um, now, we know why Laura Smith did this. She was trying to deflect from the possibility that the unelected billionaire that Donald Trump has illegally put in charge of all federal spending is an outright Nazi. And of course she was lying with that post. If you look at the video that those pictures are from, they're clearly people waving or pointing or chopping their hands to make it, to emphasize something. Very, very obviously not at all the same thing that Elon Musk did. Now, I don't think Commissioner DeBella was lying about this. He was not lying. He was lied to. Anybody can be lied to. It happens even to the best of us. And the question, how do we know whether or not we should be mad at someone for doing what looks an awful lot like a Nazi salute is a good question and should be answered. And fortunately, it has an answer. It's a very easy answer. You just have to ask, what does the person believe and say and do? Do they believe in a fusion of state violence and corporate power? Do they hate trans people and view gender equality as a disease of the mind? Are they obsessed with white birth rates? Do they support a militarized deportation force to purge the country of undesirable foreigners? Have they, and this is a kicker, ever spread a conspiracy theory that Jews are secretly trying to destroy Western civilization by replacing white people with immigrants? Whether Elon Musk did a real Nazi salute is somewhat downstream of the question of, is Elon Musk just a Nazi? And the answer to that is, well, he is certainly not an official member of the German Nazi Party of 1920, 1945. If that's what a Nazi is, I am pretty confident, pretty confident, that he doesn't have a little ID badge that says National Socialist Deutsche Arbeiter Party. Now, we might ask, why is Laura Smith trying to deflect from the fact that the Republican Party has illegally put an unelected billionaire who is probably not officially a card-carrying member of the German Nazi Party of 1920 to 1945 in charge of all of our social security checks? And why is she telling lies in order to make that case? But I think that we do know the answer to that question already. Commissioner, I hope that that clarifies when we should or should not be mad at people for doing things that look an awful lot like Nazi salutes. Thank you.
Public comment?
All right. Any closing commissioner comments?
Okay.
All right. So upcoming commissioners' meeting dates, uh, first, the next one's going to be March 6th, Thursday, 10 a.m. Uh, after this, we're going to have a salary board meeting, although we'll take a five-minute break. Is there a motion to adjourn the February 20th, 2025 meeting of Montgomery County Board of Commissioners?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wynder. Is there a second? I will second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion passes.
So you have, oh, you mentioned, we're collaborating with, right? We can, you can, that, and we're coming, can you look and let's talk about Wednesday and Thursday, March, and, and, and.
Right, one of their, one of their, they're one of their, they're one of their.
Yeah.
So you have, you have, yeah.
Can you look and let's talk about, uh, Wednesday and Thursday, March, and, and.
Yeah.
Right, one of their, one of their, they're one of their, they're one of their.
Yeah.
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 Yeah.